I agree with you 200 percent. 200 percent. And someday, I would be standing in the public office of the city of Cleveland, Washington, and I'd go to the city council and say, "I will let the city of Cleveland build it." And they'll say, "No, sir." 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 Before I do, if you have cell phones, please cut them off or silence them so that they aren't out that go through up here, please. Tonight, our invocation is done by Commissioner Way and our official leaders, Mayor Proten. Please, Commissioner Way.
May I pray with you? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to ask for your blessings. We ask that you be with us, help us, and guide us as we discuss matters that are related to our neighbors, friends, and family of our community. Lord, we ask for you to be with those in the community that need your uplifting hand. Most of all, Lord, we ask that you be with the family of Ms. Mildred Goss, a public servant here for the city for many years and one of our oldest and esteemed neighbors and colleagues. Lord, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Today?
All right, that important call.
Certainly. Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Mayor Proten Gleason.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Commissioner Way.
Here.
Mayor Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we move to item four. Please, with agenda, is there any additions or subtractions?
Yes, may I make an addition, please? So go on to discussion.
All right. Let's put that at eight to ease since that kind of calls under own business. All right.
I would like to add, especially on the results of the finals, but the most recent one.
Do you want to add that to the agenda or just do it in your report?
No, I want to add the two.
Oh, I suppose that. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and changed.
Motion is made by the mayor, Proten, to approve the agenda with the changes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Let's see. All right. Before we go any further, I'd like to take a minute and recognize our sheriff. Sheriff, if you'd like to stand up, just wave at everybody. That'd be great.
The lady's mayor, she's glad to see you. The child come by my hand and just started listening to what you got going on. And she really glad I had to even discuss about stuff we want to make sure we're on the same page.
All right. Just let me know.
Yes, sir.
All right. We move on to item five, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion is made by Commissioner Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries five to zero. All right. Let's see. That's consent agenda. We have nobody to request. Board, item seven. Hopefully, I didn't miss anything.
Mr. Agdepa.
I'm more of a bit of a back post in the crowd than a bit more. I think here for around six weeks, and I know it's been a bit of a mess. I've been in this city for many years, and many years, but I would like to today, with somebody from, Commissioner Ed Gleason. I've known him for years, many years. Go to the meeting, he'll be by himself there, but he go by. He go to, this man is the city of Cleveland, so I want to say that, again, I say not to tell that when we made the five this year, I saw him in Walmart once in a while and he said something like, he said, "Please don't say it's still in that Cleveland." Oh, yeah. Well, at least the best is that. At least the best is that. So I want to say, I know that things like a station, station, and politics in Raleigh, in Washington were extreme opposite. She wants it, I would be campaigning, the campaign, well, in the campaign for that, you smarter than that. Yeah, I do it like that anyway. But in the city of Cleveland, I agree with you 200 percent, 200 percent. And someday, I would understand, but basically, it's a dream, Raleigh, Washington, here, I totally support you are calling him. And someday, there's something anyway to say, I will let the city of Cleveland build it up more than. More than. I'll pay for it. I'll pay for it. And one last thing, I have to know, when he went, let me tell you, he invited me to his house one time, he had a beautiful house in Goodvegan, and said, "How beautiful is that looking here?" Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I've been here, I said, I don't know if you know this story, but he's looking for his son, his father, he made a loan to 56, and then, I mean, Goodvegan, and the guy said, he said, "Why my house?" So he said, "Why in the house?" We said, "That's here in Cleveland." So, God, okay, in American way, we are blessed, we have Ed Gleason, even if he's from New York, and he love the 50, and it's very much for all your personal, and I'm so happy to get to know him. Thank you.
Thank you.
We know what they say in the Wizard of Oz. Don't start posing for it now. I don't give a word, just don't start posing for it now.
All right. Mr. Agdepa, thanks, sir. We move now to item eight, A, final approving resolution. Ms. Faines.
Can you do it first?
Yes. The mayor board, tonight, according to the first items, is the condo approval resolution. This resolution, this formally approved roster, as you all who believe that our, approving their financing proposal. Along with it, in the fact that you see there is a draft, give a trust in the financial contract, although I don't know just that we wouldn't be in the draft, but here, may be ready available to shoot off for the wall and view. This resolution approves, I'll rock the kitchen staff to complete the financing for the recent property construction, and they call renovation. We are currently still on track to close on September 23rd. So, just need a motion to approve this resolution. We have lots of other, whether it's any questions, and if you can answer any chat.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Way.
Nothing from me, sir.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Nothing.
Commissioner Albright.
Nothing.
Mayor Proten, any questions? All right. Commissioner Albright, we need a motion to approve resolution 2025-R-05, providing final board approval for financing up to $2,750,000 for the flea station expansion.
I make the motion.
All right. Motion is made by Commissioner Albright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
No.
Motion carries four to one. All right. Let's see. That's there. All right. A B, update on PD and City Hall project bids. Mr. Faines.
Yes, sir. So, on August 21st, at 2:00 p.m. here in this room, that we did, we had a great turnout of city contractors who were interested in the new proposal. Tonight, just, I want to give you all an update of some that, you know, we are not awarding the contract on tonight. The LGC moves on next Tuesday for their approval. I feel more comfortable awarding it after the LGC makes that approval. So, this night is just for information purposes, just on record, we don't need, I don't, we don't need anybody to say this, we won't to go with certain contract on tonight because that's just for mission purposes. And anything that is asked or required, one, you must ask, all, fear, that's necessary question, until the contract is awarded. And once contracted, it's not a chance you go into a, you know, you're awarded, so attached to the bid document, and also was informed that shows up, that point out the details, the alternate, you know, permission, the R P package, center, contractor. Does he have any questions? He could, he'll be there.
Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Albright.
No, sir.
Mayor Proten.
Do you think that will be done before our 16th meeting? Meeting on the 16th?
September 16th, yes. So, the contract probably wouldn't be awarded until, at the latest October, first week, that would be the first week.
Oh, okay. So, our first October meeting is good.
Yes. If we award it, at the meeting, the next day, we will let the contractor know that they were awarded it, and then we will see when the contract, if we're able to, we'll bring it to you after the first week.
Thank you. Mr. Kaczynski.
I'm just glad to see that so many people were interested in the project in our town, and we had a variety of it.
Commissioner Way.
Yes, sir.
All right. Lee, thank you. Let's see.
a, to 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 a, to
Mr. Way.
No questions, sir. I'd be happy to make the motion.
All right. I need a motion. I'll let you do the motion since there's one or the other here.
Motion to approve funding option using free margin cash and a not to exceed amount over 2,750,000.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no.
No.
Motion carries four to one. Lee, excellent job. I don't know what we'd do without you and I'm glad we don't have to find out anytime soon.
Thank you for going first.
I'm getting situated back here. All right, let's see. That was stat eight E. Let's go to eight C. I think we just covered that. Eight D. Mr. Wilkins, your Seguassa item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the email that I sent last Friday, I believe to the entire board, Mr. Kaczynski mentioned to me that no one had ever asked Seguassa to purchase water filters. I recall hearing suggestions and comments about Seguassa, what they should do with water filters, but I don't remember direct requests. Although I have had one resident tell me they did in fact make that request. So tonight I propose that our board sends a letter to Seguassa to be drafted by our attorney, reviewed by our city manager and mayor, and signed by the mayor and all commissions, containing the following statements. Number one, Seguassa, despite your dedicated efforts, our water quality remains below the desired standards and have not observed any significant mitigation of PFAS or reduction in iron and manganese levels to be achieved soon. Two, water filters like point-of-entry or under-the-sink systems help safeguard drinking water. The specific type to be purchased can be selected by your staff. Three, Seguassa Board of Directors and the Creedmore Board of Commissioners should jointly decide who is responsible for these filter purchases and determine the most cost-effective buying method for Creedmore residents. Number four, we certainly do not include the municipalities of Butler, Stem, or Granville County representatives in this request and recognize that this request is solely for the constituents in Creedmore. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting we direct our attorney, if the board agrees, to draft this letter to be signed by the mayor, each commissioner, and be sent to the Seguassa Executive Board for his distribution to his board and his staff for their discussion. And once we hear back from Mr. Schroeder, we set up a joint meeting to bring this request to fruition. That's all I have, sir.
All right. So you're just requesting tonight to draw up the letter?
Draw up the letter, yes, sir.
All right. I think we need to do a... We need to have the board approve the letter, but I think we need to also have a consensus.
Absolutely.
I would think we need to have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We can sure do that. I want to make sure we did it right way. Mr. Kaczynski.
A letter, if the board chooses to draft this letter, this letter should be addressed to the chair and the vice chair of the board, not Scott Schroyer. He has no authority in this matter and it would be a waste of time to do that. So if the motion approved, then the letter should be directed to Chairman Jimmy Gooch and myself as vice chair because the board is the one that will make this decision. It could just shorten the method.
I think that is extremely... And I know Mr. Schroyer has stressed that to several of us, that it needs to go to the board.
Absolutely.
All right. Commissioner Wilkins, are you making that as a motion?
I am, with the correction by Commissioner Kaczynski.
All right. Motion's made by Commissioner Wilkins. Either for any further discussion on the letter?
Question.
Mayor Protemp.
Have we been given a copy of this?
No, this is just to...
You just read that out. I don't know...
I guess we have copies made. I have an extra one here.
This is just to put the letter together. Once it's drafted, it will be brought before the board to approve to send.
There's one anybody wants to look at.
Just so that the paper can quote me correctly, we're beating a dead horse here.
Anybody down there want to see this?
No.
And again, let me reiterate that this is just a motion to approve drafting the letter. As no... We're not sending it. We're not doing anything with it until the board agrees by motion to proceed. And we will see this letter at our next meeting, hopefully. All right. Since we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have my button pressed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My thought and my concern about this, and I just want to say this for the board and anybody who cares to listen, and I hope the newspaper gets me correct too. This board has worked very well with county commissioners and all the city municipalities. We work together very, very well with Board of Education. We've always had never had a problem. And I understand that in past years, that's not been the way. I believe that this idea will send flares up and ruin our relationships with some of the municipalities going forward. I just want to say that out loud because I just think that this is going to cause animosity between the municipalities. And I just don't want to see that happen. We've got great working relationships with our county, our state, our cities, our Board of Education, which in past years was not the way. And I like the fact that we can work with each other. And I don't want to jeopardize it. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a minute. She brought up a good point that I just wanted to double check. Have you reached out to any of the other municipalities just to see if they were interested in not joining with us, but doing a letter of their own?
I've not.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to do a hand.
I want... Yeah.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, and because this kind of runs together, I'm going to ask for...
Voice vote. Voice vote.
Yeah. Individually.
You want a roll call?
Exactly.
Usually alphabetical order if you do it that way. It's you first.
Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote by alphabetical order, please?
Commissioner Albrecht?
No.
I have to write as I go, so hang on.
That's okay.
Mayor Protemp Gleason?
My answer is no. Commissioner Kaczynski? Could I just explain my vote, please? My vote is no. This board and the members of this board and myself have been constantly, constantly, constantly on Seguassa. The people that are pushing this vote, I've never seen there doing anything, talking about anything, or doing anything. So my vote is no, and I'll be at the next Seguassa meeting like I was at the last Seguassa meeting, talking about the quality of our water and doing what we can as a commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
No, and I second Commissioner Gleason's comment.
Commissioner Way? Commissioner Welkens?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion fails three to two. All right. Let's move on. Item eight E, water test. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everybody knows, I suggested that we test the water in Creedmore to try and put people's fears at rest about the water quality in Creedmore. And we did testing. However, the testing was done at fire hydrants, which I don't believe anybody in this room drinks out of a fire hydrant. I know I don't. So in the last round of testing, all the commissioners on this board volunteered to have the water tested at their homes. Shall we wait? And the test came back that the water was within the limits and there seemed to be no outstanding issues in the last round of testing. And I want everybody to understand that this is the water from our house, my kitchen sink. I've got a videotape. Every commissioner up here had it coming from their house, which is on the homeowner's side of the water meter, where the filtration system and the water is purified through before it gets through it. In a fire hydrant, the water lays in lead pipes until there's a fire. And that water can lay there for 20 years.
Can I correct you for a second?
What's that? They're not lead?
They're not lead pipes.
The fire hydrants not lead? Okay. All right. Capstone. That's the word. Sorry. So anyway, we volunteered our homes to prove to people that we weren't afraid to have our water tested. At least that's my feeling. I won't speak for anybody else. And there were no trace levels of iron and manganese, right? No trace levels and no MCL issues with iron and manganese as there have been before. We are not testing for PFAS. We can't test for PFAS. We can't afford to test for PFAS. It would be a very expensive test. In the past six months that we've tested this water, the iron and manganese numbers had come up a little bit and Commissioner Wilkins brought it to our attention at every single meeting that they... There were levels. And talked about MCLs before. But this time, there was not any trace in all five samples. They were done in Golden Pond, Whitehall, Gavin Forest, Paddington, and Sotheby's. So across all the city. So I just want to say, my feeling is that Seguassa is right. There is... Our water quality meets the standards set by DEQ and the state and the United States EPA. There's not a problem with it. And I'm very proud to have done this project because that was what we wanted to do. And when we started it, we said we would test the water for six months. And after six months, if the results came back good, we would do it three months out and then another one, three more months out. We didn't have to continue doing it month by month. So at this point, I'm asking this board to... Because we all voted and agreed to do it that way. So three months from now, another water test would be done by pace. And I would ask that if any citizen in Creedmore wants to have... Wants to volunteer their house for that testing, you let the city manager know. We need a broad set of houses. It can't all be in one neighborhood or one end of the city and stuff like that. So if you're not chosen, it's not personal. It's just we need a broad... And we'll do two rounds and they will come from your homes. Now, Mr. Darrell Moss's water was tested over a year ago in his house and the test came back from the Department of Environment, Water Quality, that there was no outstanding issues with his water. So now we've had five commissioners that have come up with the same answer. So now we have six homes in Creedmore that have been individually tested. And there is nothing wrong with the water according to the standards that we all go by. So I would like to reiterate that this board first said six months and then we'll go out three, and then we'll go out three and take it a step further. You'll have to sign a waiver for the city if you do allow us to test the water in your homes. We all had to do it and you will have to too. So if the test comes back, the city's not liable. So I am asking this board to, I guess it's a consensus, that we stay with the plan that we originally had and do it three months out. And if anybody in the city, any one of our citizens wants to volunteer their home to be tested, that it can be.
Any other questions or comments as far as Commissioner Kaczynski's presentation? Any questions down at that way? All right. I will mention that my water wasn't tested, but we had agreed to do five. And if I... Which was the board members, and if the mayor did his, it would cost us extra money. And I'm first and foremost on saving taxpayer money, so that's why mine wasn't done. But I'm happy with mine, so I can't say anything. All right. We move to item nine A. Discussion regarding a possible conflict with the Board of Commissioners October 21st, 2025 Work Session. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. January 2025, the board approved their annual meeting schedule. Since that time, the annual Granville County Crime Sockers Banker has been scheduled for a similar date or the exact same date, October 21st, Work Session. All elected officials have expressed an interest in attending and supporting this annual event like they do each year. So would like some direction on whether you would like to reschedule that, cancel the meeting, or reschedule it. I will say I have checked with the clerk and she advises at this time, there's no items on the agenda for the October 21st Work Session. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I would recommend at this time, though, that we just roll that over since it is Work Session till the first meeting in November. Great. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kaczynski.
I would suggest that we... Could we schedule it for the 22nd? And then we could always cancel it if there's still nothing on the agenda. But at least we have the space open in case there is something with the police department stuff and waiting on the LGC. It could be something that could come up for this. So if we just put a schedule out there on the 22nd, unless anybody has a conflict, we can always cancel it at that time. I just don't want to cancel it yet.
Well, the thing with the point there is that we could cancel it and we could always call it. We'll do a call meeting later on. Anyway, that is the board decision. So any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we cancel the Board of Commissioners' October 21st Work Session meeting. Did I do something wrong? Did you say that already?
No, I just have one question. We're meeting again at the first... At our regular legislative meeting in October. I think it might be better that we wait till then to cancel it, although we're going to cancel it, that we find out if there is stuff left that we need to do for Lee and the financing of the police department, then we make a decision at that meeting.
Good idea. I like that.
Is that going to create any problems for you, Mr. City Manager?
Not me, Clerk Zee. Timeline issue with that. No. We're good.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
I make a motion that we keep the 21st meeting in line until the October... The first legislative meeting in October and make a decision.
Put that on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah. That takes care of that. Nine B, Granville County Litter Campaign Planning Meeting. Mr. Albright.
So Frank Softman and a group of people were all... There's a lot of us copied on his emails. And they have started a litter campaign in Granville County. And I just... I knew that the mayor had been on it and I knew that Commissioner Gleason, Mayor Protemp Gleason had been on it. And I had gotten involved with a social media thread watching people talk about some garbage along the street. And so I went and picked up the garbage and made sure that they knew that I had picked up the garbage. And then that's when I thought, well, I'd see how the litter campaign had been going. So I thought I would ask Mayor Protemp Gleason for any updates because I knew he was on our... He'd put on... Been put on that committee for us.
The only update I had the last meeting that we had countywide was basically to approve some ideas that had come from the different schools in the county for a litter campaign. And the group did pick posters from four different schools and four different... And we don't... We're not meeting in the summer. We're going to go back to start meeting again in October. And we will continue. As far as what I've done is I have talked to store owners in the Food Lion Shopping Center. I have talked to a couple of the businesses on Main Street about getting more garbage cans in their facilities on Main Street and outside the facilities on... In the Food Lion Shopping Center. Certainly on Main Street, we have our own. I've also talked about getting small litter boxes on along the Greenway. We have doggy bags and we have areas to do with your dog waste, but we could also get some small containers. So that is in the works and I will have a report after the next countywide meeting, which will be held sometime in October.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great.
What else? Commissioner Albright.
I don't think... Well, I did have one more thing. Ms. Hayes that's on the school board, she had asked if we had any type of litter ordinance in Creedmore. Because she had noticed that a lot of the litter had come pretty much from outside the school, like on the sidewalk. She didn't want... She wanted the students to be aware of any type of, you know, fines or anything that could happen to them if they were caught littering. Do you, Chief, ever catch kids doing those things? No. Okay.
Here, let me let the city manager address that.
I'm going to...
Sorry, Chief. Come on up.
That's okay. Come on up, Chief. I asked this question the other day and the chief told me they have to get out and witness things like that to be able to write tickets. Otherwise it'll get thrown out. But Chief, you go ahead and address that.
Yeah, so literally doesn't hurt.
I see it.
And to charge, I would literally have to see them do it. Outside of it being some mail or something like that, but we have an address to get out and take trash back.
One issue we also have is when the garbage truck goes through, they're not real tight on their ceiling.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot of that blows out. I know when I pick up trash at that corner that I mow, it looks like it comes from a bunch of people, so.
Yeah, just a large bag of just like stuff, clothes and, you know, drink bottles and a bunch of other stuff. So it's like somebody had like actually like tossed it out. Yeah, mm, but anyway.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So aside from the city ordinance, there's a law about littering on the street. So it's been enforced before without people saying they saw it. So I don't understand. Is it the DA or what's the problem?
You don't say you're charged. You just say, I mean, I don't see the litter coming out of the window. I can't go to court when you...
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it is... And then the worst part about all this is that, not that they litter, is that somebody comes along one of these commercial mowers and then they hit it and they spread it everywhere. She was wondering if there was an ordinance in the city, if we would be willing to prepare a statement for them to read at the morning announcements notifying the students that what the fine is. Your... You... We can't do fines in the CD level, right?
Well, it's a $50 littering fine in the state, is what I understand. The city manager, I'll go talk about that. We also really use our best force to pay that.
Yeah, because the Board of Education is willing to take this up.
Sure.
Commissioner Way, any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. City Manager.
One thing I would like to add is if someone dumps a bag or trash, one or more bags, and we can go through that and find names and addresses in there, we will contact those folks and ask them to come back and pick that trash up.
That would be the officer who made you mad that week.
I mean, I had someone dump five or six bags below my house and I contacted the sheriff's department. They came out and found the information and they contacted the people and they came out there and picked it up off the roof, so. Anyway.
Sheriff's Office.
He's a licensed official.
An official office.
Okay. All right. That took care of that. All right. Mr. Wilkins, you had a... You were on ten A, request to address the board regarding water testing.
Yes, sir.
Did you still want to do that?
Absolutely. I'll piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Kaczynski said. She's very accurate in a lot of things she said. So the subject of water testing in Creedmore was brought up by Commissioner Kaczynski merely following the February Seguassa meeting, which everybody up on this dais attended, except for the city manager. Commissioner Way, Kaczynski were there as they sit on the board. Mayor Will, you were there. Mayor Protemp was there. Commissioner Albright was there in person. And as I always do, I watch the following day because I don't necessarily have to be somewhere to know what's going on. At that meeting, we heard from several residents. A married couple that lives in Creedmore. These water filters are going to be displayed in a minute. If you could put that slide up. Slide number two and three, Madam Clerk. Yep, those two. They showed those at that meeting. At the meeting, her husband did a show and tell of these filters and his wife spoke passionately about her concern for, and I quote, "with chemicals she cannot see," which referenced PFAS. Another Granville County resident outside the city limit spoke about how water plants have already addressed PFAS. Another city resident spoke about the harmful effects of bad drinking water and about his and other residents requesting Seguassa to make drinking water their top priority. And I believe that's when he also asked Seguassa if they would be willing to purchase water filters. Another resident present here tonight spoke about her concerns about PFAS and the need to speed up our water quality. Madam Clerk, would you put up slide number four, please? That came from another city resident that I pulled off social media. Our residents prefer... Next slide, slide number one, Madam... City Clerk, please. Our residents would prefer that the water looked like the glass on the right rather than one on the left. So we can keep talking about how good you feel the water is, but that shows it is not. I believe the best thing we can do for our constituents is to continue to provide awareness. So tonight, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Commissioner Kaczynski that we should go as we discuss a quarterly test. But I'm suggesting that we use in the next round of tests, if possible, our schools and three of our daycare centers rather than hydrants because those that hurt inhabitants are certainly the most vulnerable. Again, even though some have declared victory for last month's test results, I do not. And I feel continual testing is something we need to continue to do. Again, let's switch to quarterly testing. Mr. Mayor, please hold it up for discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Way, any questions or comments?
I'm not sure about which resident I know from social media that we do have residents who have water that show this brownish color. I don't know if it's related to the pipes coming into their residence from their side of the meter or our Seguassa side of the meter to come in for that water to look that way. I can say that in my time as a resident in the Creedmore area and on the water system, I've never had my water look like the glass on the left. I guess I can consider myself a fortunate person. My water at my residence is odorless, colorless, and tasteless. I don't have a filtration system on my water at home. It comes straight out of a tap. I guess I can consider myself, like I said, one of the fortunate residents of Creedmore that hasn't had an issue with my water looking like that. But as Commissioner Wilkins has stated, that is a concern. So I would definitely like to find out what residential units in Creedmore are experiencing with this water. To try to narrow it down. Is it a city block? Is it a certain community area that has it? But, you know, that's definitely not the kind of Seguassa water I would want to put out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Way, for those constructive comments. Mr. Kaczynski.
We have no idea where this picture came from. There's no validation. There's no date. We don't even have proof that this is a Seguassa customer. Barbara, can you go back to the filter, please? Again, we don't know what this got, this has got nothing to do with Sigwasa. Most people don't fill their pools up with their faucet. Um, I don't know where their water came from in the pool, I don't know where this pool is, I don't know how long it's been since that filter was changed, I have no idea. Um, go back one more to the sink, I think it is, the other, there you go. This one I'm going to read about because this is Thomas DeRocher who lives in my neighborhood. And when he posted these pictures, I responded back to him and I said, "Mr. DeRocher, you need to reach out to Sigwasa right away." I then called Sigwasa and, uh, asked, "You've all been told that Sigwasa's doing a chlorine burnout. They started it in August?" They started it in August, beginning, end of August. For them to burn the chlorine through the entire system from Lake Rogers all the way out to Wilton, they have to flush fire hydrants all the way to get that chlorinated water all the way through to the other side. So, Mr. DeRocher responded by saying, "I'm not going to contact Sigwasa, I'm gonna get a private company, cause those, uh, I'll leave the expletive out, are a bunch of crooks." Well, I got a report from Sigwasa because I walked around the corner that day and I noticed a fire hose hooked to the hydrant in front of Mr. DeRocher's house. And when I spoke to the executive director, he said, "We're doing flushing in that area and that's why it's like this." So Mr. DeRocher reached out to Sigwasa on eight seven at seven fifty-one AM, and at seven fifty-two AM, he got a contact from the Sigwasa utility crew. He sent a questionnaire in, went out to the property yesterday, stated flushing the house around, started flushing the house around two PM at hydrant number nine fifteen. Spoke with the customer about his issues, told him what I was doing, and that I would be back the next day to check on everything. On eight, that was eight six twenty-five, and at, uh, the next day, I spoke with the customer and the water cleared up and he said the water was clear as it could be on the inside of his house. So anybody who says that Sigwasa doesn't respond to these complaints, I don't know, I don't know what else to say about it. Then I had another resident on Mayview Drive up from Mr. DeRocher's house contact me, and while she was on the phone with me, her husband was on the phone with Sigwasa, he was told the exact same thing that I had just told her. I checked with her again the next day, she said her water was cleared up, the flushing worked. Sigwasa, I did tell the executive director, "If you're going to be flushing lines in an area, you need to send out a blast to all the people, do it on social media, we have got a chlorine burn going, we'll be flushing the lines. If you have a problem with your water, know that it's flushing, but let us know so we can fix it." That same day, my neighbor at, right next door to me, had a leak on their property. He said for the past three months, he's noticed his bill has gone up ridiculously, but he just paid it, he didn't do anything about it. I had a leak in my yard, seven years ago, there was water coming up out of my driveway. And Sigwasa came and they realized that the line that goes to my water meter, that went from the street, up my driveway, under my driveway, and then to the water meter. And because of the weight of cars and trucks on the driveway, it had finally cracked the line. So they came back and they ran the line directly from the street to my water meter and out from underneath the driveway. That was seven years ago. This now neighbor next door to me dug up the lines because Sigwasa told them they were still investigating, he didn't wanna wait, so he dug it all up. The water is pouring from a pipe underneath his driveway. So Sigwasa came over to me and confirmed about the leak at my property seven years ago, and they said, he said, "I remember it because we rerouted your line." And we looked up and down the street at all the patches that Steve has repaired in Whitehall, and every single one of them was because the line went under the driveway and eventually it cracks. So the water and the leaks that are in our neighborhoods that are happening now are because the city of Creedmore let that subdivision get built. Mr. Mike, when a subdivision site, I know you weren't here in two thousand and two, when a subdivision site plan is submitted, are the water lines not in that site plan?
They are, but the services are not.
Okay, so Creedmore would have approved these drawings because it was Creedmore Water at the time, and allowed the builder to put these water lines under the driveway. And one by one, they're breaking, and one by one, they have to be repaired. And one by one, Sigwasa is getting stuck with the bill because the Cadillac system that was sold to Sigwasa is faulty. And there were four trucks, I've got pictures of the trucks at his property, and it's gonna cost quite a bit of money. They're gonna dig up his driveway, they're gonna dig up the street, they're gonna dig up his yard, and every single one of these, and I'm sure it's the same way in Davenport too, because it was the same builder about months later, they ran the water lines under the driveway, and eventually those lines are gonna break. And are we coming back, is Sigwasa coming back to Creedmore and saying, "Hey, you put them in, you pay to fix them?" No. Sigwasa gets the brunt of that, which expands onto the rate payers, which is what people are not understanding. Sigwasa is a private company, it's not a municipality. And I know that there was an article on social media by a candidate saying they were not even aware it was a private company. Well, it is. Pay attention to your bills, pay attention to who you're paying, because it's going to make a difference when you make that phone call, so you don't waste it calling on, calling the city when it's not the city. I had a gentleman who said, "The city just came out and painted my fire hydrant." The city is not painting fire hydrants, it's Sigwasa. And Sigwasa is doing the best that they can, and the damage that is happening with broken lines and possibly the pothole on Main Street was done years ago in Creedmore by the Creedmore Water System, and when the sale went through, people didn't dot I's or cross T's, and now all these problems are starting to surface. So Sigwasa has been extremely quick on responding to these, and they're very serious about them, and, um, I just want people to understand, this one I will validate, this is in Creedmore, this happened on, uh, in, on the date that I mentioned before, this is Creedmore, I can validate this. These other pictures, first of all, we don't even know if it's Sigwasa. We don't know where they are, we don't know when they were taken, we don't have any information, and I believe it's totally irresponsible to just flash them up there when there's no validation for these. So I'm not asking to get validation, I don't wanna, Mr. DeRocher, I've already spoken to him and told him that this picture was coming up at our city meeting, and asked him if he was okay with it, and he didn't, he didn't return my call, so I'm assuming he's okay with it. But I understand that this problem was fixed, all of Mayview Drive was fixed, Sigwasa is working on water quality, we asked them to flush the lines, they're flushing the lines. This will happen when they start flushing the lines. This will happen when they're trying to improve water quality. This is why this is happening. It's not a standard thing, it's not a daily, I live on the next block from this man, my water was fine. The day they tested it, it was fine. I have a videotape of them testing the water. But this is the only picture I will stand up and say, "This is Sigwasa water and this is why this happened, and Mr. DeRocher and the other two people on Mayview Drive are fine with the water, they flushed the lines and now it's all fine." But the rest of these pictures, I have no idea where they came from. And I've spoken to Jim Wren, and Jim Wren said, "Can't even validate that it's Sigwasa water," so he said, you know, whatever. But I just want people to know that, just cause these pictures come up, there's no guarantee, they're all Sigwasa, there's no guarantee they're all, we had a tub at the last meeting with dirty water in it, that was not Creedmore, that was Butner. So if we're gonna do it, we need to, I understand the point you're trying to make, Commissioner Wilkins, but I just feel that we need to make sure that what we're presenting is related to the issue that we're trying to fix. And Sigwasa, we, we sent them a letter in December, we said, "You've not been flushing the lines, we want you to flush the lines." Now they're flushing the lines, and this is gonna happen because the water in the lines has been sitting, and sitting, and sitting, and they're trying to get the chlorine all the way out to Wilton, and the only way for them to do it is to flush the line wide open to move that water. And I think that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilkins, that's all yours, but I wanna give everybody a chance to ask their questions before you respond. Mayor Protemp.
Well, can I piggyback on what she just said, please?
Let me, I want everybody to have a chance to speak before we start circling back. Mayor Protemp.
Again, I wanna, I can't argue with Commissioner Wilkins wanting to have clean water. What I wanna push back on is you've never heard out Ed Gleason's mouth that Creedmore has good water. Never heard it.
No, sir.
Never heard it. Um, we had bad water when I was here and they used to send us letters when Creedmore ran the water department.
Yep.
And after Sigwasa got the water department, two weeks after they got notice, they told us to boil our water, but that was kinda a moot point. So I've never said there was good water, but they have had fairly decent testing for the last seven years. Um, and until we started testing water and the magnesium and iron levels were somewhat high, uh, that was never in the report. Uh, so I just, again, I never said the water in Creedmore was good, I said the water in my home is good, I have no problem with my water. Um, we've come to a point now where for the last three or four Creedmore city council meetings, we've been discussing something that we have no control over. Uh, it's become a def, I'm sure that my remarks about, um, the fact that we're beating a dead horse is probably already on social media. Probably.
Yep.
Um, I was at a, I, I, I'm gonna be very short, which is hard for me, um, um, I was at a Sigwasa meeting, the last one, and I met a very nice gentleman there, um, who I have no problems with and we're friends on social media, and it seems like a very good gen, very nice gentleman. And after the meeting, and this is, this is not a paraphrase, this is an exact phrase, I didn't realize they were doing all this about Sigwasa. I, I mean, how would somebody know what's going on unless you know what's going on? And, and, and now, quality water is very important to me, nobody can argue that fact. But now it's become a campaign issue in a election season where people are telling citizens of Creedmore they can do something that they can't do, just to try to get elected. And as far as I'm concerned, if, if I can make a motion at the beginning of every meeting between now and November fourth, that we do not discuss water at a public meeting in the city of Creedmore unless somebody's gonna make a motion that we buy back the water system or something like that.
You can make that.
Because I'm really tired of being honest.
You can make that.
I'm tired of being honest, and that's a sad thing to say. But don't worry, the beat the dead horse or just a Band-Aid will be on social media in somebody's campaign promise before the morning newspaper hits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Albright, any questions or comment?
No, I don't feel like, um, I haven't really said much about the water either. I haven't had any problems with my water. I've been in the city for twenty-two years and I, um, like, uh, Mayor Protemp said, you know, we used to get the little, um, the little, uh, things and that you were supposed to put your water in and test your water and send it back, you know, cause they were gonna test your water, which when you first move here is a little weird, you know? Um, but the whole, yeah, it is scary, but the whole, the whole PFAS thing, um, they call it a forever chemical because we are stuck with it forever, unless somebody can figure out a way to remove it from all the things. I made a list here that, um, I was reading an article in the Times Magazine the other night, which is unusual for me because I'm not much of a reader, but, um, the PFAS thing got me because of what we talk about constantly in our meetings. Um, there is PFAS in contact lenses, in tampons, in eye makeup, other cosmetics, of course our happy water bottles here, and, um, and, and I think we're just, we're stuck with it. I mean, we can get the levels down in the water that make it, that we're not, you know, ingesting it, um, to a certain level, but, I mean, we're always gonna have it because it's in everything that we have, it's in our, our cooking, our pots and pans, our spatulas, everything. And when you're cooking with something and it's hot and being heated, then it's, you don't even know how much you're ingesting. So, um, you know, being bullied and berated on social media for weeks on end because of the water, and, and I agree with, with pretty much all of my, um, my teammates up here, you know, we should have clean water, and there isn't any reason why somebody in America shouldn't have clean water. Um, like Commissioner, uh, Kaczynski and, and, and Ed and, and Robert, they say, you know, "We're working on it." They are working on it, they really are working on it. And, um, you hear about Wilmington and Meben and all these other cities that have horrible things going on with their water, they're not even close to where we are. So we should be glad that we have what we have at the moment, cause it could be worse, which is a terrible thing to say, it could be worse, um, but, that's, that's my comment.
Okay. Mr. Wilkins.
Just sort of building on the pictures, as I mentioned initially, every time I was at the February Sigwasa meeting, I watched it every, the following days I normally do, I took screenshots of what the husband and wife put up. So that's where the pictures are from, Commissioner, Sigwasa video website. That's all I have to say.
Right, thank you. Okay. So, and I guess I need to say my water's good, my house is thirty-five, forty years old, and so the pipes are too, but I have no problem with mine.
Mr. Mayor, and let me also say the same thing. I have, I've been fortunate, as the rest you've mentioned, I don't have a problem with my water, but my concern is about the other constituents in the city.
I agree, and, uh, I also had not thought of the schools and the daycare.
Yeah. Can we discuss that, by the way?
Okay.
Maybe next round of testing's being here, if the board agrees.
We'll, we'll, I'll, we'll get them to look into it.
Okay.
All right, we move down now to ten B, twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can call him, I'll go back.
Commissioner Kaczynski asked me some time ago to schedule an update on, to the board for all of the capital improvement projects that we have in twenty, have completed in twenty twenty-five and FY twenty twenty-six. So I would like to point your attention to the large spreadsheet that's in front of you, the yellow column there. Uh, you've seen the slides in here from Mr. Carl Barclay, but before we get to Carl, there's two other presenters I want you to hear from. Steve Edwards with the Public Works Department who's gonna speak towards vehicle on page ones, pages at the bottom center, the vehicles, the park, ceiling of the parking lot at Community Center in Harris Park, and then I'm gonna ask Troy if he'll step up and report on his, uh, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then we'll go to Carl for the remaining projects for an update. So we'll begin with Steve.
Good evening, Steve, that was our work director, good to be here. Uh, the first time we got this year is a vehicle first, um, that reached up to Capital Chevrolet in Wake Forest to purchase two little cars, they're securing a program, contract number two five one zero eight for a Chevrolet, a lot of fifteen hundred, and we've been purchasing a vehicle for that three hundred and ninety-eight, so we've got nothing that we, we have a little quarter left, so this July one, we'll just fly the way first. There are more twenty-five, so we have twenty-six, um, we've got, we've got a Chevrolet, we have, and you guys know that. There are more than twenty-five, so we have twenty-six. We've got two capital Chevrolet. And first, let me... Anybody know that?
Is that current five hundred? What was the hit price on the vehicle?
The vehicle, forty-two thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and sixty cents. That's forty-two, one fifteen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I should have asked for your permission to see.
That's all right. I'll overlook it this time.
I appreciate it. My apologies, Steve. I was at the turn, man.
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, with the pricing on the truck for the forty-two thousand, does that include the warning lights? Are we gonna put those on after market?
Well, that's what I was thinking as well because I purchased those again through state contract. Those are the vendors that the police follow, usually batteries of N C.
Gotcha.
But yes, that will be covered under the price as well. Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Next item is the steel coat striping of the upper and lower.
Hold, hold on just a second. I'm sorry, Commissioner Kaczynski, did you?
Do we not have to get this truck through state contract?
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
State contract number 2510A. If you want to go to the first Chevrolet.
All right. So they work with the state contract, that's what's going on?
Yeah, I'm dealing with the government sales manager at County Chevrolet.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So I need you to get... Anything else on the vehicle? Okay, uh, steel coat striping at the community center. Did you know there's enough for low apartment lots, uh, there to be done? Forty-two thousand square feet, uh, steel coat for steel coat and striping, uh, in a room for ADA places as well as arrows. I've got a man in one, split three, except that he's not here yet. But I hope to have that third quote by the end of the week. We'll remove it in under budget, by the way. I don't pay much interest, but it came in under budget. So we should have that done soon after we get the third quote. Before your Christmas tree light, and that, that red turban, you'll deal with that eventually. Um, let's see, last... Oh, yeah, um, Harris Park, landscaping improvements. Spoke with the Recreation Director, Kathy. Uh, we're trying to refine what scope exactly it's gonna be. Um, there's some talk about some parking improvements as well as some colors, flowers, and things like that. But we haven't really defined the scope all the way yet. As to what the tattoos will be spent, but we know what's gonna be spent. We just don't know the scope yet. But she and I are trying to work through that. Hope to have something done within the week, so on that. So we're excited about moving these parts forward. But that's pretty much my update for the board on capital projects. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Not hearing any, I'd just say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Call's coming on later. Uh, so my capital improvement, uh, is expanded. It's a budget we got for six hundred police officers. Some additional police officers and a part of the preparation, uh, position, uh, part of the preparation position. Uh, depending on this, we'll probably have, uh, half a percent. I wish we can, uh, very much think we're gonna be done more than one and a half times in the last two years. Um, so yeah, more than that, we're pretty much a portion on market assessment, which is we have other people working on stuff to make sure that we're doing things, uh, in the form of standards. So I'm thinking by, uh, February, we should be well on our way to, uh, preparation. Um, we have, uh, one person in D L E T right now. Vehicle finished in December. Uh, currently, uh, we have one person start today, so excited about him. We gotta meet him, uh, future working or working in. Um, we have one additional person in the background phase. He's the director that we're trying to hire. Um, and that will leave, uh, two vacant positions that are being completed. So we have applications left there. I don't have anything to drop. But, um, at last check, we should be getting the vehicle, uh, in the upcoming, um, event.
Any questions for the chief? Commissioner Kaczynski.
So those are the vehicles for the four officers that we authorized?
Yes.
So you're just getting four new cars?
Uh, we got, we got two replaced as well. So, um, I'll replace, uh, one of the S R S cars, um, coming up. And then we got a new, um, vehicle for our, uh, fresh game.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last.
Roger, I'm last game today.
Is there something wrong? Oh, she was driving the Fusion. Um, everybody knows that car, so it's not inconspicuous the way it used to be.
Right, we didn't shop.
Um, so under twenty... In 2027, you have a hundred and forty-nine thousand, two eighty. And that's for the rest of the police officers. So we got one in B L E T, one new today, one's in the background check. So a hundred and forty-nine, two eighty for one last officer?
For next year. Uh, currently, that's probably gonna change the only two create happen for any additional officers.
And where are we on our dog?
I have a dog, but, um, so, uh, I have an expert in the background phase. It depends, uh, for the goal, not the dog.
Do we have anybody scheduled for S R O certification aside from the ones that we have? Are there any additional officers?
Uh, the person just got his S R O certification that we have. That would give us the three that we have plus, uh, the two that we have already.
And that's the officer that's gonna be working in the office?
Yes, but he can deal in.
The reason I ask that is because, um, one of the officers expressed to me, I think it was you even said it, that if we go down in S R O or somebody's got a doctor's appointment or something like that, we would send an alternate up. But an, an alternate police officer, patrol officer can't do everything an S R O can do. So my concern, I know we have one other certified S R O, and I was just wondering if we had an extra one because if they can't do what they need to do, then they're not any good to us.
Right, so we have two.
Okay.
Mr. Way, any questions? Thanks, chief. City Manager.
And now I would like to direct the board's attention to still on page one down to the twenty thousand dollar range. That is the dumpster pad at the community center. And ask Mr. Carl Barclay if he will come back up to the podium.
We really want you this time. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to update the board on the FY twenty-six C I P project that are being managed by the Community Development Office and offices of other projects that are currently underway. First, I'd like to mention one that's completed from FY twenty-five. That's the procurement of a new truck that a code enforcement officer. It may sound like a simple task, but nothing is essential. So the first project is the, uh, at the community center. The decision was made to expand the garbage collecting capacity by replacing the balloway trash cans with commercial sized dumpsters. And our ordinance requires that dumpsters be placed on a concrete pad and have an enclosure around it to screen it from view. So I met on side with the city manager and in fact from the community center to discuss two possible locations. On the left is the option one. That would be right behind the businesses that are located off Douglas Drive. And then on the right is the option two. That's the turn of the former concession stand now used as a storage building. So we, uh, discussed the merits of each location and decided on performing option one. So the next steps for the workout is, I'm just trying details. For example, the exact size that we want, the finished material, pedestrian entrance and landing for that area. Next project is the main street called Parking Lot. This is given to our on-call firm, R K A K. And I recently provided them with comments on the 60% plan that are keeping the Sonic Lodge, the corner yard, giving them multiple opportunities to comment on the plans. There's no surprises. And the final plan is for second to be submitted around the end of September. And that'll include a construction cost estimate that's based on the action design. Which will also include the trench, um, the trench drains going into the sidewalk to make sure there's no outstanding problem of water staying in front of the situation. So the way it shake and shake, on the left side is the main street. At the top is the Masonic Lodge, Chief Street on the right, and the pharmacy down the bottom. So it'll be thirteen parking stalls total. Two of them are ADA accessible and one of those two is, uh, banned accessible. So it could be an ADA accessible route along up to the main street sidewalk.
Uh, Carl, hang on a sec. Commissioner Way.
Uh, Carl, in speaking with the Masonic Lodge, the current wooden ramp that's there in the decking, they voted the other night to, when the contractor is in that phase of doing the concrete ramp design and everything, they wanna disassemble that and rebuild it new.
The ramp or the deck itself?
Both.
So is this, this part of the structure gonna replace the ramp and not connect it to the deck? So it'll be a separate structure? So it makes one to replace the deck at some point? I think likely they were gonna at least do some renovation work on it.
Correct.
It wouldn't be impacting to be two separate.
Right, they just wanna, when it gets to that point, they, they, they had mentioned that they wanted to work with a contractor, so they would be adjusting away.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So we're paying the contractor and they want us to fix their... They wanna work with them to their debt?
No, the Masonic Lodge is gonna do the debt.
Oh, okay.
But they, they can't be in the way of the contractor.
Scheduling, reset, okay.
I didn't expect to see a creep more. Come on, give me some credit.
Never know.
It might have been worth a try.
Might have been.
All right, so then the next project is known as the Sidewalk Gap Project. And that will run through our on-call firm's Summit Design Engineering. So there are twelve segments that were identified as gaps in our sidewalk system. And the board has previously concluded four of those as your priority segments. So segment seven is on Main Street. Segment eight is on Horseside Road. Nine on East Lion Street. And segment ten is on Peachtree. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the map that shows all twelve of those segments. So this task order was given to Summit Engineering. It was broken down to different phases. So we just completed phase one, which is the feasibility study and report. So the purpose of the feasibility study is to gather available information, screen the options, look for challenges, look for any problems that are out there, and then develop a schematic design and recommended routes. It can be left side, right side, or maybe some of these, and across the middle. And they give us a preliminary cost estimate based on what they know at this time. Then a summary report that includes all the information that was gathered, decisions that are yet to be made, any recommendations or opinions they have on these different segments. Then we also had to evaluate the segments for M P A or state for a federal funding, just to see what they thought the chances were. So they replied back and they have a estimate that they intended the estimate to capture all associated costs with these segments. And it's not really a range for the two numbers. It's more of option one versus option two. The sum is a big difference between the two options and others, not much difference at all. If you sum all those up, the, the range is from two million to two point seven million dollars. When we asked them about their opinion regarding, um, funding, they said that we are in the FY twenty-seven locally administered projects program, program progress E P. They said that it's possible, but it'd be very challenging. Now, there's several things that can make us, make us a better candidate for competitive. One is having a project that's shovel ready. That means having complete construction plans all the way, you know, they're all the way done. And also having all right of ways that needs to be acquired for the project. Right of way needs to be... That makes the project more competitive. Also, if you're willing to pay more than the standard twenty percent, that makes you more competitive also. And when we do decide to submit, just, we have two options. We can submit all four of them because they're all part of the city's overall possession and transportation plan. Or they could be separated out and submit them individually based on the individual merit of each segment. Now, the complete results of the feasibility study will be presented to the board and discussed in more detail at a, at a later meeting. Now, before I continue on to the other projects, are there any questions regarding the, uh, FY twenty-six C I P?
Um, City Manager.
Carl, for the board's clarification here, and me and you and Mike talked about this. It shows ten thousand dollars here for right-of-way acquisition. Are any funds in this FY twenty-six for the design and engineering for what you just spoke about, or is it in twenty-seven?
Uh, I'm not prepared to answer that question, but I have a feeling that a lot of things are gonna have to be adjusted as far as what year that thing is gonna come up. Because we didn't, I don't think we first saw doing it this way, a feasibility study for just four segments and then proceeding.
All right. Are you gonna need any funds in this year to do this engineering and design work on those sidewalks you just showed us?
If the board decides to proceed those.
Okay.
Mayor Protem. And legal state... Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you grunt, so.
There are no funds allocated in this year because the study is still being developed, which was approved in last year. So whatever comes from the engineering work in the study, then the board will decide on how they wanna proceed and how we wanna fund those, uh, projects. But apparently, I think it's just...
Now, Carl's got some more information he wants to share with you. It's not C I P, but it's an update on other projects.
Okay, is there any other questions though before we move on? He would let me know. Lee wanted to say something.
So the L A F funding is gonna delay this another two years. And we approved this project in twenty-three. And we're not even out of design yet. So I understand, Lee, what you're saying is more money was taken out of the budget, out of the general fund to balance the budget this year than originally reported. I think it went up by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more.
From the last fiscal year?
From, well, no, not from last fiscal year. When you did the first presentation, I think the amount to come out of the general fund was six hundred thousand and something. And when I looked at my budget the other day, we took over seven hundred thousand dollars out.
So in that, in this period of years, and the budget was perfect, I didn't need to be obligated, double it to a two hundred and seventy thousand, around that number. Uh, last year, when it was originally approved, we took out, we appropriated six hundred dollars and at the end of the fiscal year, it came up to that one point two million after all of the amendments and everything. In this period of fifteen years, uh, it's at seven hundred thousand now because of the First Amendment that was done for the personal order.
Okay.
So that's what, that's additional, uh, on that appropriation wasn't there.
Okay. So it, it's just that this sidewalk gap project, so if we apply for the twenty-seven L A F project, Carl, somebody in our... Somebody in the office has gone to the training for this now so that we can apply for it. Um, the money... The L A F program is through the D O T, or is it Campo? Campo. So if we won the grant, there's no guarantee. We're not gonna get that money till twenty-seven. And then the construction would begin. So these gap projects that were approved in twenty-three, twenty... End of twenty-three, beginning of twenty-four, they're not gonna be done until twenty-nine. Twenty-eight or twenty-nine. I just, I'm just, I'm not picking on you. I'm just trying to understand it because this is something that we were requested to do at our town hall when the D E I had a town hall. That's how old this has been. And we're nowhere. And I just want the citizens to be able to get something out of this. And that's all I'm saying. But I just wanted to confirm that the L A F money, if we won it, I don't know what month in twenty-seven it would be. But then we have to schedule the construction and then... So it's not gonna be until twenty-eight or twenty-nine before this is done.
I can say exactly one, but it will be, it will be long.
I know you can't.
Any other questions?
So moving right along to some additional projects. The Lake Rogers Dam Structural Agency, uh, Chernobyl and Specky City, which they're a subconsultant for R K A K. They're on site on August 20. I don't have a picture from my presentation, but in the C D O monthly report, there is a picture that Specky City plays. in the CDO monthly report, there is a picture of that inspection taking place. They're using a ground penetrating radar going back and forth across the secondary spillway to deal with the issues. Data-driven glaring issues are surprised to be able to go out there. Currently, they're analyzing the data that we gathered, and allowing these additional testing that's required. Now, the either, is the minimum repairs that we're going to recommend, it's going to include fixing the concrete that has this small surface and sealing some of the cracks. Those items are already included in the letter from the state, the dam inspection letter. Of course, the vegetation control, that's an ongoing issue that our public works focused and taking care of. As far as the maximum repairs that they recommend, unknown. But I think it's likely that they'll present several options to us, things that we could do that would extend the life. I'll present them to the board, and the board will have to weigh the cost versus the anticipated benefits of the job. I'm expecting the final supplemental from Chernobyl around the end of November. Next additional project is the Doggo Drive, Whitehall Drive, the drainage area study. This is a science, our consultant of Weather and Heating. They divided the areas into six subdivisions, which should help us write up bids for repairs, what the priorities are. At this beginning of the year, the report is, uh, is long, but less than, they have a nice concise, that's called conclusions and recommendations. That's the important part for us. It's good to be all about learning how they got into that. But the conclusions and recommendations, I'll present that next Tuesday to the Stormwater Committee. And after that meeting, there'll likely be several potential improvements to consider. Again, I'll present them to the board, and you'll have to weigh the cost versus the anticipated benefit of those improvements. And then solar energy systems for City Hall. The Coast of Energy Solar, there are installation crews, they are swamped, but we are on the schedule for January 26. And that gives us plenty of time before the ramp expenditure deadline in June. They're estimating a two-day installation. And of course, the government requires minor coordination by the building contractor, because the new PUs will be under construction by that point. But just some minor coordination regarding parking and material saving. But I was very glad to see that their design, there won't be any roof penetrations on the roof. Because of the metal roof, the seams on it, they can clamp the sole panels to the seams. So I think that's, that's good for future, future issues or lack of future issues. And that's what I provided in the City Hall renovation plan, so there won't be any conflict in the electrical room regarding the, the embers or other control equipment that they have to dissolve. Then there's some other things that, I can't say they're active projects, but we're tracking them, we're aware, and they're out there. The Holiday Creek Road Repair, Zink House, there's the Elm Street drainage issues, potential sidewalk from, or potential sidewalk on Fleming Street, from Zink House to Main Street, Douglas Drive, the pavement repairs, the, the street improvement. Several drainage maintenance issues have been identified on the street and Apple Street on the east side of town, and on the west side of town, Charles, Cotton and Helen. So they're all, they're all out there. We're aware of them. But in closing, I just want to tell you that I realize I mentioned numerous projects without a firm cost. Some of them don't even have a preliminary estimate at this point in time. Unfortunately, it's too early to list them all in a spreadsheet with a firm cost that you consider which ones you want to go with, which ones need to wait. Can't do that at this time. But I just want to make sure that you're aware of what's in the hop, what we're working on, what we're aware needs to be worked on in the future. And when firm numbers do become available, I'll present them to the board at that time. So with that, do you have any questions about anything I presented tonight?
Commissioner Wilkins, any questions? Commissioner Albright.
I have one question. Where the spillway is in, out of the lake, on the left-hand side, there is a chain link fence that's all like tore apart and like gross. Who's responsible for that?
You are.
He is.
Who? Oh, I'm looking at.
The part that's gone down, close to the road?
No, there's, it, it's, it's up on the, it's up by the concrete, like it's in the woods kind of, sort of.
Is there a pre-fire on scene? Yeah, that's our fence, so showing the garage is not fully to.
Okay.
I'm in the violation.
Mayor Proton, Mr. Kaczynski.
I'm really glad that Carl is here. I really do appreciate your presentations, and this has nothing to do with you. I am really disappointed that every one of these projects that are over a year old are not further along than they are right now. I'm extremely disappointed that the potholes, um, by CVS, that drive me insane every time I have to come out of that bank, that they're not fixed yet. I just, it seems like everything's taken a backseat to the police department, and that's my problem. Um, the citizens have asked for these things to be fixed, and they've asked for sidewalks to gap, to close the gaps, and they've asked for potholes to be fixed. Um, and they're all, we're, we've got no money to get a lot of this stuff done anymore. And I just feel like we're taking the backseat to the police department. But that's just the way things are, I guess. Now, so this is the third report we've had on the dam. So are we saying that the dam is fine, or are we snobbles saying it is or it isn't fine?
We're analyzing the data that we gathered, and they're out there. So we don't, they did mention they need some additional checks. Once they evaluate all the tests, then they'll have the recommendation for what needs to be done. It could be minor, it could be major, and there will probably be decisions that we have to make.
Well, if I remember correctly, Mr. Franco, when Gerald Smith was here, this project was going to cost $2 million if that dam had to be replaced or repaired. And I'm guessing we don't have the money for that either.
That's why the one way, you want to extend the life, that's we don't have to worry about that.
What, fundraising?
Robert wants to do a spaghetti dinner to raise funds for today.
That and a concert, we'd be in business. Any other questions down this here? All right, Mr. City Manager, what else?
Um, we're ready to move on to the manager's report, if the board's ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Proton, Gleason and Commissioners, um, things, few things I have to report this evening. Conference calls continue weekly between VC3 and Sierra Spruil to ensure the successful migration of city servers to the city, to the VC3 data center, which I told you last month was in Atlanta. Once the pilot testing is complete and all applications are confirmed to be up running and properly functional, the equipment at City Hall will be removed. August, VC3 in August, uh, this past month opened 20 work orders and closed 23. A recommended adjustment to the FY20, 26 being raised schedule is nearing completion and will be presented to the board for consideration, discussion, and possible approval at your September, no, yeah, September 16 work season, yeah. Um, I would like to also remind everyone that Leadership Granville class of 2025 project this year is a food drive for ACIM Food Pantry. Their goal is to collect 5,000 pounds of food and $5,000 in donations. There are five locations across Granville County. Creedmore's location point is, it's a lobby of City Hall. If anyone is interested in participating in the class project, you can drop, there's a tub out there, you can drop food goods in, you can leave a donation. It's a front counter, and we'll be sure they get those if anyone wants to do that. And finally, I'd like to thank the board for the recent performance evaluation and for the opportunity to continue serving this board and the citizens of Creedmore. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Any questions for the City Manager? Any that way? No. Okay, um, Mr. Way, and Mr. Kaczynski, Sigwasa report.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, so it's all you, brother.
Um, if the board will be so kind to review the emails that were sent out from Director Schorer from last week, it'll give you the most recent update. We did vote to spend to replace the filter media at the water treatment plant. So that project is going to go forward and hopefully will make a, a huge impact. It was almost $1 million in funds that we had to appropriate for that. Uh, just be advised that these filters at the water treatment plant are supposed to last anywhere between 10 to 15 years. And from what I can understand, they've been in there over 22 years so far, and no one knows what's in the bottom of those filters when they finally get to replace them.
Could be.
Um, there's no telling what they're going to find. And that includes the nozzles in the bottom of it that they may have to replace. So the contingency funds are also passed. Um, as I stated, I'm hoping that that will make a huge difference for us with our water improvement quality with the filter media. Um, other than that, I believe we have covered more Sigwasa information at the City Council meeting tonight than we cover at a Sigwasa meeting. So I yield the rest of my time to anyone else that may have a comment.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Question, Commissioner Way.
Yes, sir.
They're still going to be on four phases, one, two, three, and then four and five, the last phase?
They are planning to do it in that order, yes, sir. I will find out more next week if anything is changed.
Any other questions? All right, not hearing any. We'll move to Commissioner's report, and since Commissioner Way's on the roll, we'll let him begin.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as you know, I have recently returned back to my duties here from surgery. That was unexpected when I was out of commission.
Glad to have you.
And I appreciate that. Uh, I am looking forward to attending some, some future meetings and I believe some banquets, um, towards the end of the year here to speak with our counterparts and the other parts of government that we associate with. I'm looking forward to continue to talk to our citizens about what they would like to see their city government look like, and to just remind people to be involved in, in your city government, that this is an election year for the municipal election cycle, and to please get out there and do your research and make sure that you're picking the person that's going to be the one that's going for you to, to be your constituent cheerleader. And I have enjoyed my time on this board these last four years, Mr. Mayor, and I'm looking forward to hopefully continuing on this board with the rest of my fellow board members, and continue to put Creedmore forward in the first.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaczynski.
So, um, I attended a roundtable in Oxford last week with Commissioner Albright. Um, Congressman Brad Knott came in, and we were at the Chamber of Commerce in a very, very crowded room. Um, they had food, the room was so crowded you couldn't get to the food. So, Mr. Mayor, you didn't miss any food. Um, Mr., Congressman Knott notified us at the meeting that there is quite a bit of infrastructure money at the federal government level, and it's available, and it's going to be on a first come, first served basis. But if a project is ready to go, and we send to him the name of the project, its purpose, its economic development, um, goals for our community, the cost, um, and everything that we can possibly send him, he will be glad to try to, um, secure some of that money for us. But he said there's a lot of money for infrastructure, and since we've got a lot of projects and not a lot of money, I think that if we've got something that's really ready to go, we could possibly send it to him. Um, he, um, I attended the African-American Festival this weekend, where I met a bunch of people that I worked with at Wells Fargo, and we had absolutely wonderful time. The food was great, dancing was fun. And, um, I'm looking forward to the CAMPO meeting and the UNRBA meeting, which are also on the 17th, which is Constitution Day at the schools. And I'm not sure how my schedule will allow me to go in there, but Stan Winborn said they don't have a time on that project yet, but he would try to work it around. The other thing that I wanted to say was, this board has worked together with each other so much and so well. And I would venture to guess that 85% at least of our votes are unanimous. We do disagree on things here and again, but most of our voting is unanimous. And, Mr. Mayor, you and I have been to enough conferences that we've learned that stability and continuity gets projects through, because if the board changes, so do the projects. They can be stopped and new ones can be started. And the City Manager doesn't have any control over that if the board says, don't do this anymore, we want to do that now. But the projects that we have in this CIP, and this is why I asked, we are moving forward on these projects. Um, like I said, we started some of these in 2024. They take a bit. Uh, Carl's worked very hard to get everything that we want on them. But if we change, if a board changes, it tends to change the, um, direction that the city will go going forward. So if you want these projects to continue and to go forward, I would ask that you remember that when you're voting.
Commissioner Wilkins.
I am not sure that anyone in this board doesn't want clean water, although we have a wide difference of opinion on how to get there by 60% of this board. However, despite the pushback and the continued risk of being a unpopular board member, I will continue to push for clean water, both pre and post this 2025 election cycle. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Albright.
Um, like Commissioner Kaczynski said, we both attended the Brad Knott Roundtable. It was, it was pretty good. Um, a lot of people had some, um, worries about the future of having enough machinists and factory workers. Um, and Stan Winborn said that he was working really hard, um, with the school and trying to get, you know, these things on the board, because you can't just jump into a machinist or a factory, you know, position. It's a, it's a hard position, and it's hard to get the kids, um, up and ready to do these, um, jobs. So that was, um, interesting to hear. Um, I'd just like to know if we have any updates on the music festival about our schedule, like what we, as commissioners usually do. I know Angie usually gives us a schedule. Do we have anything?
You got mine, right?
I know what.
Schedule. I gave it to you.
Okay.
I believe so.
Or?
Is it scheduled 10 to 11? Maybe it was you, Mike.
And you have not, no, they just, they're not there yet.
Okay.
As soon as I get it, or she asks, I get, I talk to her, I can get it to her.
Okay.
So, I want you to know what's going to be.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Proton.
No, no.
Let me thank the two members of the public that are hanging in there.
Yeah, I know.
We've obviously lost control of the rest of the public earlier.
We've lost some of our.
It's only 10 minutes to eight, and we're, we're not doing badly. Um, I have many things coming up between now and the next meeting. Um, I just want to, I was in New Jersey, I flew into New Jersey on last Monday, and I was ready to come back to Creedmore on Tuesday. To be honest with you, I, I couldn't love the area or town more than I love our city. Um, sadly, when I got home, we got home on Sunday, and Monday morning, um, we're notified that one of our closest friends and neighbors had unexpectedly passed away. Um, so it was a long day for my wife and I, and my wife and, and this, I'll say this 84-year young healthy lady, who I saw this Sunday before I flew out of New York to New York on Monday, um, was a wonderful friend. And, and her husband, who's 90 years old, Bucky and I started coming to Creedmore City Council meetings in 2011, and we didn't miss any, but he always made me sit on the outside so I didn't have to go over him when I was trying to get to the microphone. And Bucky's now alone. But what I wanted to say is, when we got there, um, shortly after this whole process started, there were two police officers there, Officer Cash and Officer Parrish. there were two police officers there, Officer Cash and Officer Parrish. I couldn't say more about what those police officers did. For the family, for my wife, for myself, they were, I, I can't say enough about them. And, and I know my friend, Commissioner Kaczynski, sometimes is a little overbearing on the police department, but there is a cost for having a very good police department, or we can kind of have a mediocre police department. And there's one thing I've never really heard in Creedmoor is people complaining about our police, that our police aren't stepping up and aren't doing what they're supposed to do. They're community minded police officers, community minded police chief. And, and again, I just want to say that God forbid we have a need for our police officers in Creedmoor. I know because I've seen it firsthand that they're going to step up. I've thanked the police officers, I've thanked the chief, and, and we had, we had a previous chief who was just like our current chief, cut from the same cloth.
He had more hair.
And, and, and again, I'm proud to be Mayor Pro Tim of a city that has a Class A police department, and I'm glad that we can give them a facility that will make them double A. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Well, mine is going to be a little short. I was off all this week. Probably one of only one week vacations I've gotten in eight years, so it was nice to kind of get away a little bit. But I will, what I'm going to do is just mention the things I've got coming up, in case anybody thinks the mayor doesn't do anything. On nine seven, I've got an arts, an artesian exhibit at the museum in Oxford. On nine twenty, I've got the music festival. Nine ten, Strong Towns event, which I believe is in Oxford. Nine twenty-five, Car Tar banquet. Nine thirty, D E Q water and wastewater event. Nine seventeen, Fall Meeting in Asheville of the Mayor's Association, which I serve on their Board of Directors. Nine twenty-three, the North Carolina Cooperative Banquet, and I'm sure I missed something, but anyway, anybody that tells you the mayor doesn't do anything, it's just because you don't see it, and that's the only reason, which I like.
There's a hole in between all that.
Just goofball, I guess. I've always felt like good elected officials, and this is not campaigning or anything, good elected officials should be, shouldn't be seen. They should treat their position as this is what I've got done, or this is what I'm doing, and people see the results, not that we sit up here and say, look at us, we're elected, we're doing this and this and this and this. You should be able to see what we're doing out in the public, and especially those things that you don't see. Please know that we work just about at some point or another twenty-four seven for the city, and I saw somebody the other day thought that the mayor made too much money and the board made too much money. I figure we're averaging about two dollars and thirty cents an hour. So please understand, if you don't see us, we're out there, and we're doing the best we can for the city of Creedmoor. So having said that, is there any other business that needs to come before the city? I don't believe we have a closed session tonight.
No, sir.
Anything down this way? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Let's go with the Mayor Pro Tim this time. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, thank you all for coming tonight. We're adjourned.